We have our very special guest keynote speaker. We have Harris County Precinct 2 Commissioner Adrian Garcia with us today. He is a personal friend and also has been a great friend of technology and cybersecurity over the years. Commissioner Garcia's 35-year career in public service began as a Houston police officer. In 1994, he was appointed by Mayor Lee Brown as director of the mayor's anti-gang office. And in 2003, was elected to Houston City Council. That's where we first met, Commissioner. And during his tenure, he served as chair in two city council committees. The Public Safety and Homeland Security Committee and the Minority Women Business Enterprise Committee. With the support of his peers, Mayor Bill White confirmed him as Mayor Pro Tem. And that was the time both of us, with Mayor Bill White, a good friend of both of ours, we ran that whole effort here in Houston to take and cover Houston with Wi-Fi. And you were a big supporter of that effort at that time, too. When we were, Houston Wi-Fi everywhere was what we were trying to do. A little ahead of our time, but as a result of that, we were able to put stuff into the libraries and into the parks and into underserved neighborhoods. And that's been a good, good effort. And in 2008, Commissioner Garcia continued his service by being elected as the Harris County Sheriff, the largest sheriff's office in Texas and the third largest in the United States. On November 6th, 2018, he was elected Harris County Commissioner for Precinct 2, which serves more than 1.1 million people. Commissioner Garcia is committed to working every day to make Precinct 2 and all of Harris County a place where everyone who wants a job can get a job, where everyone can afford to rent or own a home, and where our kids and seniors can walk to church, park, or school without fear of crime. Let's welcome my good friend, Commissioner Garcia.
Wonderful. Ummish, thank you very much for that kind introduction. And I would just simply want to say good morning to Cyber Houston. And first, let me congratulate you, Ummish, for this fourth annual cyber summit. This is so exciting to see happening. And especially in light of so many things that are currently happening with our community and our state and our country. But first, let me first begin by saying that the need to have this conversation is so critical in these days. And for those of you that are, that have registered, this is one of the smartest decisions that you have made. Because to be prepared with information from a network of trusted experts is so critical. I remember way back when, when Ummish and I were talking about this. I remember as the sheriff recognizing that at that time, identity theft was a major concern for me at the time. Because I was astounded for the number of offense reports that were being filed in Harris County by people who had never set foot in Texas, much less in Harris County, who were having their identity stolen and regretfully with very, very little, little real possibility that we would ever be able to catch these bad actors. So it prompted me to bring my trusted experts to the table. Ummish was the first call that I made. Looking for ways to have local law enforcement be much more contemporary with the challenge of then, identity theft. But then looking into the future for what would be cybersecurity. And I am so grateful that Ummish was a major part of the conversation. In the conversation back then, it sounded a little bit like this. Look, if you want a law enforcement officer to talk to our children about the dangers of drugs and gangs, well, we have someone trained to do that. If you want to know if your business or your home has the right locks and the right lighting and the right security devices, we have someone who is trained and certified in that area. If you want an officer to check to see if your child seat is properly installed and being properly used, and someone to help make sure that our children understand the safety of riding a bike and wearing a helmet, we have folks who are trained and certified in that regard as well. But if you are a small business and you want to know whether or not there's something suspicious happening on your computer, on your, at your home-based business, at your sole proprietor type of business, at your business of 10 or less employees, then we would simply say to you, call the Geek Squad. Because we just do not have that type of expertise. We had the forensic capacity, but that's always after the fact. But the question of how to ensure that people are doing the right things at their respective levels has always been and still remains a challenge. And that's why I say to you again that participating in this cyber summit is so, so important. And I applaud you for registering for this particular event. But as we look into why here in Harris County, it is so important to take this education on cybersecurity and IT systems so important and so seriously, is to think about where we are at. Harris County has a GDP that is approximately $490 billion. If we were a state, we would rank 15th in the nation. And if we were to be a nation, we would rank 26th in the world. That's pretty significant. That's pretty cool, if you ask me. But with that prestige also comes its challenges. The challenges is that there are bad actors, domestic and foreign bad actors, that would love nothing more than to be able to control the cyber systems, the IT systems of the Port of Houston, as an example. The IT systems of our airports, the IT systems of some of our major businesses here in town. You know, the excitement to see this fourth annual summit is also based on these points that I'm making about the significance of our local economy. Because prior to Cyber Houston existing, the challenge that Ummish, because Mayor White charged them with leading this conversation. The challenge that Ummish at the time was to get business leaders to the table and say, have you been a victim of a cyber attack? Has your financial records or your personnel records or operational information or operational systems, have they been compromised through a virus, through a hack? Obviously, that's almost asking people their ages and their weight. It's personal. And for legitimate competitive reasons, very few people at the time were willing to disclose whether they had found themselves to be vulnerable. People didn't want to share the possibility that their discussion could lead to identifying vulnerabilities in their system and their operations to a business competitor. I totally got it at that time. So to that end, let me just say that today, the fact that you are here and you're at the table and that you've registered for this event shows me how successful Ummish and Cyber Houston has been to recognize the fact that we must talk to each other. We must share best practices. We must be willing to understand what is the next evolution that happens literally by the minute in our society as it relates to cyber threats. And that we're willing to share what has been our respective challenges. And so again, I applaud you. But to that end, let me just say that this pandemic has taught us a great deal. You know, when I was sheriff, I dealt with SARS. I dealt with H1N1. I dealt with Ebola. And I felt that our department was prepared for the challenge. However, I did not see a future that we would be existing as we are at this moment. Having cyber conversations, whether it be StreamYard, Zoom, or what other platform is out there. Never would I have imagined that. And the reality of it is that as much as we have adapted to this, so have the bad actors. As a case in point, we had, we were doing a Zoom call or chat with area constituents regarding some flood control projects that were underway. Our conversation was hacked. We had to shut down the entire conversation prematurely. It was very unfortunate because the information that we were sharing was critical to community. But it completely disrupted the ability for us to finish that conversation. So today's environment, recognizing that aside from the health care challenges that we're facing with COVID-19, and on that point, let me just say that I hope you and your families have not been personally impacted by this. If you have and you've lost a loved one to this horrible virus, my heart goes out to you. My prayers and condolences are with you and your loved ones. But to that end, let me also just say that we're working diligently to support our local Harris County community. I've led two small business loan programs for area businesses and the neighborhood of $40 million. Direct assistance, rental assistance for landlords. All, we're doing it all virtually. And I am very glad that we have not yet had any problems. But pay attention to how I said that, "not yet had," because it's likely. And so as we deal with this pandemic and we understand the loss of life that has occurred and we understand how many people we still have in ICU beds and we understand the frustration of local businesses who have had to shut their doors as a result of this pandemic. As we understand the economic pain that is out there and we're working hard to deal with it. Harris County has been working hard to distribute approximately $400 million in CARES Act dollars to our local community through health care programs or through those small business programs and rental assistance that I mentioned. That's a great effort and I'm proud of what we have done. Harris County has led the way. We have shown other parts of Texas how to get it done. But to that end, the reality of it is that this environment, this way of existing today will remain with us in the long term. In speaking with area businesses, one business in particular who has 1,500 employees nationwide, if not worldwide, and asking how does he see the future of his business operations to that, to the owner of that particular business? And he said to me, during this pandemic, we have had approximately 10% of our employees working in the office. Whenever we get out of this pandemic, based on the input of our employees, we may get up to 15%, but not to the 90% that was their reality previously. That is telling me that your expertise, your education, your preparation, your skills are just as critical as the medical personnel that's on the front lines currently. You will be much more important than we recognize at this particular moment. Because I believe that this will be the reality for many businesses. It'll be the reality for government, no doubt. And as a result, we will need you and your skill set to help us continue to move forward. And as a result, it just again makes me proud of Ummish, Cyber Houston, and all of you who have helped to make Cyber Houston a department for homeland security initiatives related to cybersecurity. The future is bright for us because of you. Obviously, we give all the gratitude and appreciation to our medical professionals because they're fighting the good fight as we speak. Law enforcement is out there on the front lines risking their lives. We've already lost a Houston fire arson investigator just recently, sergeant with the Houston Police Department. Our law enforcement and first responders are out there. They're risking their lives. But by the same token, small mom and pop businesses who are counting on that one sale to make it through the week. Medium, small businesses that don't have the in-house IT professional, they're vulnerable. They're at risk. And with this election that we're currently under, I have been through numerous conversations with Major General Richard Noriega, our new Universal Services Executive Director, who brought in a specialist from the Pentagon who had worked on the military's cybersecurity initiatives. That's how much we're paying attention to our own cybersecurity. And while other local governments have been victims of ransomware attacks and other related types of attacks, we're very fortunate that Harris County has not yet confronted that. And hopefully, we will not. But if we are successful in never having that type of experience that other governments have had, it'll be because of Cyber Houston. It'll be because of the collective brain power that's here locally and at the table. And so with closing, and I'm happy to answer questions that you may have, I'll simply say that again, congratulations to Cyber Houston. Congratulations to all of you, the attendees, for participating in this conversation. And I will say that the conversation and the need for resilient cybersecurity in today and into our future will be profound. Very few of us will ever have really imagined what our future would look like in, in the, with the reality that computers and data systems control a significant amount of our lives and our businesses. And so for that reason, I applaud you for dedicating your lives to this industry. And as I close, I will go back to the issue of the pandemic. The pandemic has closed, has forced businesses to close. Obviously, we need to look and understand resiliency for the next possible pandemic or health care-like type of challenge that we will have. I would like to think that this will be our last, but it's probably not. And as a result, we will have to think about how we depend on these technologies to allow us to move forward. And it is for that reason that the next industry sector, economic sector that I am looking to move forward is in the area of technology. It is in the area of programming. It is in the area of innovation. Because this is telling us that we have to further diversify our economy. I was a young man when my daddy owned a gas station in the 70s. And I remember when the oil embargo happened and we saw lines of even-numbered license plates and odd-numbered license plates. Gasoline thefts were abundant. And so it just reminds me that the challenges are many. The, but the opportunities, I believe, with experts like you are greater. And because of you, we'll be better, we'll be more resilient, and we will continue to lead the state and the nation in moving out of these challenges, challenging times, just as quickly as we get into them. Thank you very much. And it's been my honor to be a part of this summit, this fourth annual summit. Ummish, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Adrian. Thank you, Commissioner. So we have this awesome opportunity. If you want to ask a couple of questions, throw them in the chat. We will be monitoring and bring those up. We, you know, you've got, you know, the port also comes underneath your jurisdiction. And so, and you know, during this COVID, I would say that the supply chain and the resilience of the port has been probably of primary importance, especially making sure that people get goods and services in a timely and reliable manner. And you want to kind of talk about maybe a couple of the things that y'all had to do extra at the port in order to ensure that? And you know, cybersecurity is such a big piece of that.
It's huge. And, and Ummish, thank you for bringing life to it. In fact, the business leader that I made reference to, having those 1,500 employees nationwide, is the current chair of the Port of Houston, Rick Campbell. And so I'm proud of his leadership there at the port because he obviously gets this, having been a local leader here in the Houston area for many years, helping us think through opportunities and bring attention to our area. He has also paid attention to ensuring how the supply chain is as minimally disrupted as possible. The reality of it is, it has been disrupted and it will, and it is slowly, slowly recovering. My favorite shampoo and energy drink is barely making it back on the, on the shelves. But it, but it, but you're absolutely right that the port had to think about its IT and cybersecurity processes. We've had non-public conversations, quite frankly, about the state of our cybersecurity in the port in Houston and Harris County. Because obviously, we don't want to have those conversations publicly. But it's something we have paid a lot of attention to. And that's why I'm so proud that we have Major General Rick Noriega helping us lead those. Because as a military commander, someone who oversaw IT operations in the military and his vision to bring in some, someone from the Pentagon who had direct experience and expertise in this regard, that is going to make sure that the port and the rest of our county operations are well-protected. Keep in mind that from the port to the courts, civil and criminal courts, district attorney, to the nine county law enforcement agencies, the sheriff and eight constables, to the fire marshal, to county administration, to the toll road, to the flood control district, to the hospital district. It is all centered in Harris County. We've got to pay attention to this.
Yeah, and Commissioner, you just went right across all of the areas, especially law enforcement, the COVID situation, the electronic office in the car, the cop in the car that you and Sheriff Gonzalez have been leading for many years. And you know, the, I guess those are, you still have to continue to provide all of those services. What about the jail system? And you want to kind of talk about that a little bit? Let's get into some of the really touchy areas.
I'll just tell you that I've always been proud and impressed with the jail staff. Regretfully, you know, no one gets to see their good work because they're working inside the county jail. You'll, you'll, we'll throw parades for that firefighter and that police officer that helps someone cross the street and save that cat out of the tree. But our detention staff are really just as incarcerated as the incarcerated in the county jail. And as a result, that closed environment, remember, we don't give these inmates a whole lot of space to operate in. It's a reason why we, why we call it incarceration. And as a result, that air system is very, very confined to those operations. And we had a lot of detention staff that was infected. Sheriff Gonzalez lost two, at least I think, two for sure, maybe three, either retired, but definitely one or two active employees who worked in the jail from, as a result of COVID. And, and you know, so his efforts to try to be smart about how to depopulate the jails so that we can minimize the risk to our, our, our first responders, but also pay attention to public safety, was a critical amount of, of his time and effort during this pandemic. It's also important to why during my time as sheriff, we were a paper-driven system. And so we had to bring a contemporary jail management system into the equation in order to make sure that people got processed in a, in a timely way. So these were all the challenges and figuring out how to decontaminate staff and keep their families healthy was also a particular challenge. Remember, a lot of our staff that work in the county jail are taking care of a vulnerable and elderly loved one in their homes. So we had to think about resources to keep our staff from being inadvertently a part of the spread as they go from work to home and potentially contaminate their loved ones at home. So we, there's a, there's a massive amount of effort that we had to think through all this. And obviously, the struggle with getting testing and getting test results, all that has been a major, major undertaking. But it's also why I'm very proud of Judge Hidalgo for her tireless efforts. Look, I come in here often, early rather. I come into my office early. I generally leave late. And the judge's vehicle is here and most times before I get here. And it's still here most times as I'm leaving. So she's working hard on this issue and I applaud her for her efforts. And look, there's no playbook for what we've gone through and what we're going through. There's no playbook for all the preparations I've done as a sheriff and dealt with. And remember, I was also the director of the mayor's anti-gang office when Mayor Brown also also asked me to be a part of the preparations and response to, don't forget, Y2K. And so all of those things, all that collective experience was still not enough for us to fully and easily navigate this pandemic. It's been incredibly complicated.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, and thank you for everything you do. And I will wish you all the best and your family all the best. And thank you for taking care of us and also protecting the elections and the port and the jail system and small businesses and for being a great cybersecurity and technology champion. Thank you.
My pleasure, Ummish. And again, my respect and gratitude to you for your dedication in this area of, of our industry. And your leadership has made tremendous contributions. And so I simply say to you, thank you, but keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Have a great, have a great summit, everybody. Thank you.
Very much.